Hello, we'll open it for public comments. Anybody have any comments they wish to make on any item not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will close public comment. Third item on the agenda, Citizens Advisory Committee presentation, Darren Carls.
Okay. I've got a packet for each one of you. Welcome to follow through. It's easier to keep them in order like that and then just bump to the highlighted changes when I get to those.
Is there any for the public?
Do you have extra copies?
I do have extra copy of the summary for everybody. You'll have to take one and pass it around.
What about that stuff?
If anybody wants a copy, I'd like to make one at the meeting.
Yes, please. Well, if you pass it out at the meeting, you're supposed to have it right now. There's a copying machine next door.
I believe we can suffice with an executive summary in the case of a detailed document.
Because some of that stuff may not be pertinent to public view, I don't know. But I went with the summary for everybody for now.
The rules are when you pass something out at a meeting, everybody else should get it so that you're not following what the open meeting clause state.
Anybody that wishes to have a copy.
I would like a copy. No, they should be right now.
Good question. If the annual cost that you came up with for each thing is the cost for 2018 or before or after? This is all fresh dollar numbers. Okay, okay. So with cost of living etc. goes up? Exactly. Whenever you have a dollar figure question, I'm going to refer this to John because he has some of the dollar figures. He's a dollar figure guru on this. So anyways, thank you for scheduling the meeting. Our advisory committee has voted to deliver this information to you on before June 1st meeting. Obviously, the sooner we can get this information to you guys to review, give you more time to make an educated decision. We didn't want to delay in the process of getting the information to you and we felt that, I felt that we completely hit it wrong. So I wanted to get the information to you as soon as possible. The Cuyahoga Fire Department Citizen Advisory Committee has asked to prepare costs for three options. And they were to provide 2O full-time staffing, 24/7 career firefighting. We were able to go above and beyond and obtain some additional options for you to review. And I'll get to those towards the end of the presentation. We were asked to convene a minimum of two times and we got together a total of four times. All meetings were agendaized, they were posted at the fire department and around town and social media as well.
That's unofficial.
On our last meeting, we had LAPCO appear at the May 15th meeting. They educated both the public and the committee members of LAPCO's recommendations, their options, and especially how they facilitate the process of dissolution if you choose to seek the advice of LAPCO. So the next page is exactly what everybody has here. It's a summary of the findings. First one was to provide fire protection for the Cuyahoga Fire Protection District, 2O staffing, 24/7 career done by the fire district, okay? Those numbers came in at approximately $1,437,000. The next option that you asked us to look into was to contract with CAL FIRE for the same type service, 2O, 24/7 career firefighters. We did that, it came back with a total dollar figure of $1,280,000 approximately. Third option was the proposal will turn over the fire protection to the County of San Luis Obispo to provide the 2O staffing, career firefighter with the empty or better, just like the other ones. And that came in at an annual cost of $550,000. These are all estimated dollar figures by the way, pretty much those. So on the next page, this packet right here has to do with the district providing the service of 2O. Now, as you see, I highlighted the dollar figure there for you, that's $1,437,000. And at the bottom, the approximate tax increase would have to go to $525 for a single-family residence. Now, these numbers were given to the advisory committee by the fire department and I believe it to be accurate. And no different than a year ago, I think the numbers might have been tweaked a little bit, but they're pretty accurate. Supposed to be accurate, okay? Next page is just a breakdown of that pay scale and how they go about it. The next page after that has to do with a 15-year period, how they projected to come up with a surplus in 15 years and how they would go about it if you chose to seek a tax increase and go that route. The next page has to do with option two with talks about contracting with CAL FIRE. Now, as I stated before, that on the bottom of the page, the cost came out to $1,280,000. And that cost is for six firefighters and an office technician. Now, if you choose not to go with that office technician, there'll probably be a little dollar savings there for you. But the way they proposed it to us was with an office tech, okay? Now, in this option, it's important to remember that they believe that there's startup costs that would be involved. And they have a station modifications to provide the proper living quarters for the personnel, $250,000. Equipment and other costs of $100,000 with a total estimate startup expense of $350,000. And that's basically what they just came up with. I don't know if that's a standard or what it is, but this is their dollar figures they gave us, okay? It's important to remember with this option that you are only contracting with CAL FIRE for that 2O service. And anything else, basically, you are responsible for as the district. Station maintenance, vehicle maintenance, new vehicles, everything else.
It's just personal service?
That's just personal services, okay? That $1,280,000 figure. Does that make sense? The next page is basically just supporting documents. I believe this was email traffic with a couple of people on our board with Chief Jahlil of CAL FIRE. Who's that email?
Russ.
The other two members again?
Yes, I've never met any of them. Yeah, Russ with his person. Okay. So those were basically some supporting email traffic that referred to those dollar figures as well. So moving on to the next page that has highlights on it. This is the third option that you wanted us to look into. Moreover, there we go, we're all on that page. This is the one that has to do with the dollar figures for contracting out with CAL FIRE. I mean with the county direct, okay? Not contracting, but dissolution, the county can take over the fire protection. After a meeting with Supervisor Gibson, the estimated dollar figure is $550,000. And that's the total taxes that we obtain, both the property taxes and the fire tax, special fire tax combined, would be handed over to the county for fire protection. They would in turn provide the 2O staffing, no different than they provided throughout the county at that time. Now, there's some other questions and answers that I have on this sheet here. But there was a couple of extra ones that I wanted to point out to you guys. One question was can the county increase the fire tax without a vote? Supervisor Gibson's answer to that was no, all taxes are done via the voting process. Another question that was asked was seen as we are the highest special fire tax in the area, would it be possible to obtain paramedic coverage? And he says, sure, I will lobby for the best possible service for the community. So there's that possibility of negotiating something if you decide to go down that process. Any other questions is that on that page? On the next page, we had some questions, some questions were raised at our committee meeting. And we went back and got some more additional information. One of them, there was a concern about the deed of this property. Some people thought that it might have been in Morrolo Rock Waters' name. But after investigation of that, that is not correct. It is Cuyahoga, solely 100% Cuyahoga Fire Protection District, okay? Now, also, it's important to remember, whereas the annual cost is $550,000 for the 2O fire protection, we all felt it was appropriate to let you guys know that you would also have to hand over the fire station to the county and the assets. And we were asked to go out and look for some type of property value to give to you. And after research, it came to 1.1 million conservative to this. So obviously, the Gibson's point of view on this is it would never get to that because he would personally would like to see it continue as a fire station if you went down this road. If not, some type of youth center or something was his verbiage that he used, okay?
But it's not really up to him, it's up to the local board supervisors.
Exactly, and I'll get to that. Well, it's up to us too because we can negotiate, like the LAPCO said. So that's sort of a recap of those three that you gave us to look at, to look into, okay? Now, the next page is what was given to us by LAPCO. Now, there's one thing that's different in LAPCO's recommendation than what both you guys have recommended and the previous board had recommended as well. There's no difference other than this consolidation with the CSA-10, okay? Now, there's pros and cons to the consolidation with CSA-10. The main note that he gave us was the county may not want to consolidate that with CSA-10. And if you decided to dissolve and go that CSA-10 route, the county may not be acceptance of that. And if the county doesn't accept it and you want it, then there's a problem with LAPCO and it may not be approved. But please do your due diligence if you decide to look down that route, okay?
CSA-10 is popular this month.
Yeah, everybody's trying to tap into their money, I think. But regardless, no matter how you go about dissolution or CSA-10, you've got to have a mutual agreement with the county. And I think they would, according to this, they would probably frown upon the CSA-10.
Are there any benefits known to going with CSA-10?
The disadvantage that I personally see would be the potential of raising the water rates for south into town and not the water rates for here. That's what I see. Could you come up with a positive for CSA-10?
Just to comment on that, I think they're segregated. In other words, the fire protection money would be for fire protection. Water rate revenue could not be used for fire protection. What would have to happen is one of two things. Either CSA-10 would have to raise the fire tax or you could negotiate with the county for them to kick in the additional funds. Because we know, based on the one option that Darren talked about, the direct contract with CAL FIRE, it's $1,280,000 plus those startup costs. The number that I just saw out of the county budget indicated that a full-time equivalent cost countywide is being budgeted at almost 191,000 per FTE. So 200,000 times six, about a million two, is probably not a bad operating number. So if we're generating 550, another 650 is needed. So either through a tax increase through the district, CSA-10, or get the county to contribute more. The county's going to contribute the money anyway because that's the cost. They're going to have to pony up the money. The thing would be, one of the things that I've talked with Bruce Gibson about is they've said, he's personally told me a couple of occasions, because I asked him about, we're putting more money into the pot if we raised our tax. And he said, I'm very reluctant to do that because I have no control over the district. If we consolidate with CS-10, the board of supervisors controls the district. So that argument kind of goes away and the amount of money they're going to have to come up with is the same. The positive I see to that is you may be able to negotiate not having to turn over the fire station. Maybe, I mean, that's up for negotiation, it's not automatic if you dissolve. And two, you can negotiate kind of an advisory committee, a citizens advisory committee that could overlook things. Three, the funds go into, they're separate. They don't go back into the county general fund. So those fire tax revenues go into CS-10 and are earmarked strictly for fire protection. And they don't go back into the general fund and then, you know, they may come back to the fire district.
Since it's going to be a negative, they got to put money in anyway. I don't see that being a...
Could you repeat your second point from there?
I mean, the positive, the positive? I didn't have it written down, so... The positives would be...
Not turning over the station.
Yeah, not having to sell the station.
Advisory.
Yeah, yeah. The county has to come up with the additional funds anyway if we dissolve. And that was one of their stumbling blocks, at least with Supervisor Gibson, is that he didn't want to put money into something that he couldn't control, or they will control it. And then the other point would be the advisory committee that just kind of keeps an eye on the supervisors and go, hey, we don't like the way, you know, things are going or why are you spending money this way or that? And as opposed to, I think, turning over just to dissolving, everything goes into the general fund and then it's, you know, whatever.
Does that sort of make sense to you guys? I mean, regardless, if you go that route, there's some serious politic work that needs to be done with the county to get them to buy off on that. Because when you go through that LAPCO process, you've got to have support on both sides or it just fizzles.
Now, what was LAPCO's, I assume it was Mr. Church?
Yes.
What was his thought on, I mean, one of the first things that he warned you about was if there was a conflict between what the board wanted and the county, if they said, well, no, we're not putting in CSA-10, we have county fire, you know? What was his response?
His response was basically what was written down on this document. But he did reiterate the point about the CSA-10, the county may not want to do that. Now, on the next page, it has the process of dissolution. And there's a period that they go, there's a resolution of application. That's about approximately initial start of $2,500 to get the ball rolling on that. But he has it clearly spelled out here, the process that needs to be followed if you choose to go down dissolution or dissolution with CSA-10. Timeframes that, a lot of this, all of this stuff, timeframes is a minimum of six months. So there's, you know, you've got to start, whatever process you decide to do, obviously, you need to make a decision on what you want to do here, start that process and then hope that the current status of the organization can survive to that timeframe period. I don't know, only you guys know the budgetary issues here and the operational issues. I no longer know them. So I would recommend that you, that plays a big part in your decision and making the ball roll down the hill here. Okay, so, next page. Before I move on to this, I want to make it perfectly clear to everybody that those four options are absolutely the only options that we have that pertains to 2O full-time career firefighting for this organization. That's all there is. There isn't any, we weren't able to come up with any more. The past, the previous fire commissioners weren't able to come up with it. I mean, we've been working on this for probably three years now. And those are the only ones that there are for that 2O full-time career firefighting, okay?
Are you taking public comment in between right now? The county hasn't said, we'll do 2O. They will do adequate, which is not translate.
No, that was one of the questions that we asked him. Will you provide the 2O staffing? Answer is yes, they provide the 2O staffing throughout the county. That's their minimum standards that they follow, state follows. And that's what they do.
But if they're gone on another call, Cuyahoga's could be uncovered.
It's the 24/7 they couldn't guarantee. They'll stop, but they can't guarantee 24/7.
With a contract with CAL FIRE, they guarantee 24/7 coverage, it's guaranteed. Under an AMADOR contract, that's not guaranteed, okay? Yes, there is automatic aid and mutual aid that you can add to the mix. But as far as the 2O staffing, career firefighting, those are the only way to go. If that's your desire. So moving forward, we were able to come up with about three more options that were not what you guys were initially looking towards. But I wanted to present them to you anyways, so just in case you haven't thought of them before, we can go over them again, okay? So the first one has to do with Cuyahoga's fire district sees all active operations and contracts with CAL FIRE under the following conditions. One of the conditions would be CAL FIRE provides a full-time staffing at Station 11 at zero cost. Now, that's highly unlikely.
During the fires.
During the fire, yeah, during that. They're going to be on fires. There's no guarantee that that is going to provide 24/7 full-time coverage for the county. So there's one little hiccup with that one. And the second little hiccup with it is for the hurdle that you may have to go over. Would be, the other part of that would be the Cuyahoga Fire Protection District signs an AMADOR agreement. Now, the problem with entering into an AMADOR agreement is that we used, the Cuyahoga Fire Protection District used to have an AMADOR contract with CAL FIRE. They recently gave that up. That's a problem, it's problematic because there's only so many AMADOR contracts that CAL FIRE allows within our county. And that's already been scooped up. So trying to get that back is going to be extremely difficult. Or you'd have to wait your turn, basically, until somebody decides to get rid of their AMADOR contract and then we can jump back in it, but who knows? So those are just, I don't want to talk bad about it because I'm impressed with, especially this John point of view to look at this. It shows me that somebody's looked at this at every possible angle. And this was the first thing that came forward. And I don't want to shoot it down, it just has a lot of hurdles in it, okay? That's all I want to say to that. Now, there is some dollar figures that he's come up with. And he has the 15-year plan on how those dollar figures would unfold. So if you need additional information on any of these further things as it pertains to dollar figures, I encourage you to contact John for that information.
Just for clarification, as you're sitting here?
Sure.
Was this, the numbers you put in here, the increase was, were you figuring that as an increase just based on the cost of living increase or were you looking at a tax increase in here?
There is, no, there's no tax increase in this one. The increased cost in the contract was based on the five-year average, which at that time was 5.8%. And I increased it, I believe, I had it in front of me, because I've updated the numbers a little bit. I think I increased it at six, yeah, is that right? Six percent, which was a little bit above that five-year average. And the amount of $200,000 per full-time equivalent, this was again done before I saw the county information. So I was kind of taking a stab at, kind of like the last four or five years, again, what the county was paying on a full-time equivalent basis and just making a best estimate guess and came up with 200,000. And it turns out for this year, it's 191. And so I just increased that at seven percent or six percent a year in the original plan, based on just taking it a little bit more. And I think on scenario B, is it on there Darren, scenario B where I think I increased the cost at eight. So you ended up with a much bigger deficit. And I also kicked it up to a starting point of $220,000 for a full-time equivalent. Just for some context to say, okay, say I'm way off by 200 and we go to 220 and I'm off instead of six percent, it's eight. What do the numbers look like? I mean, how many years will you run a surplus before you start to run a deficit? And then at what point, if the station is actually sold and the equipment is sold and you bank the money as a means of funding further costs, you know, roughly how long would that last? Before you'd be out of luck?
But your revenues, your two and a half percent increase in revenues, was that solely based on the property tax and the CPI increases?
Yeah, what I did is I kind of took the numbers to get, I took the starting revenue figure and increased it by two and a half. I updated the number a little more analogically, similar to some of the other ones that I did, where I did a CPI of 3% on the fire protection district revenues and 2% on the property tax and other revenues, you know, re-debating, interest, whatever, you know, donations, you know, whatever else you get.
Big sales.
So that's a pretty, you know, it's less than the 3% CPI that I used. And I just figured like, you've probably seen the lowest CPI figures for a while. They're probably going to go up from here. But, you know, that was before I had seen the numbers for, the latest, the numbers for CAL FIRE talking about the salary increases and whatever. Now, these revised numbers I have, I bumped it up from six to seven. And, you know, it's a minor change.
Like I said, there's some hurdles to it, but it's a good first stab at looking at something. And the remainder of these, they're not 2O full-time, 24/7 career firefighters. They're just a step below that and I'll continue to go through them next. So if you skip two pages to the next highlighted area, the next one has to do with career and reserve firefighter combination. Now, this plan at the bottom would require a tax increase. It would need us to be about $875,000 a year. And you would need to raise the single-family residents to $350 for single-family residents. Plus, you'd have that $270,000, that's in the property fire tax that we give on top of that. But there is some dollar figures here, it shows how it could potentially be on paper. The reserve part of it, I have no idea if that's operationally working or sustainability or anything like that. That's, you guys are in charge of that kind of stuff if you choose to go down that route.
So what you're describing here is basically the current model that we're using is enhanced?
It's enhanced a little bit where you've got a...
Some full-time.
You've got a full-time chief, a full-time assistant chief and...
Is this considered option four?
I bet you it crossed off. Yeah, that's, we have problems with options. It's just another option is all it is.
In terms of my options, it was number three. In terms of our committee's options, it was number four.
Okay, we got a little confused. That's why I wanted to move through this page by page. But...
So, this one, the actual, no, I don't want to call the chief and the assistant chief not firefighters, but if you'll bear with me, the actual people driving the truck.
Rank and file.
Rank and, okay, would still be in the reserves.
Yes.
Yeah, you're firefighters.
I just want to make sure that I've...
Yeah, no, that's right. But the chief and the fire captains would be full-time. And the fire captains would be required, as I say on here on page two of the forecast, that you have one firefighter and one captain on each 12-hour shift. And, so you have, yeah, one firefighter and one captain on each 12-hour shift. And you have a paid chief. You're able to rotate your captains through. You have a secretary. And I'm basing it on 400 calls a year. And I did $18 a call even though I know they get like 15. I'm saying, okay, I know they get paid by the hour. Some calls are going to be less than an hour and they get 15. Other calls are going to get more than an hour. They'll get a little bit more. And then I've got the various, you know, costs. I've got costs in there for FERS and other benefits for the five paid personnel, the chief, the captains and the secretary. And then the rank and file or the reserves still at $100 per 12-hour shift. And I have that going up 5% a year for five years and then 3% a year thereafter. So, you know, it's a, it's a combination. It's not full-time, but it's, it's a little more than what we've been running now.
And the only people getting benefits would be the officers.
Would be the officers, yeah.
That makes sense. So, there is a tax increase associated with that. And it's a sustainable tax. Yeah, it's three, it goes to $350 per home. But the sustainability of the reserve part of it is, I know, always like a budget and sustainability operation.
What I tried to do is come up with the costs and then tried to come up with a revenue number that would allow a buildup of some surplus in the early years to fund later. Because you don't want to go in on the very low-ball number and having it just basically balance at year one. And then within three years, you're back saying, I need more money.
Now, just to be clear in this, this, these numbers don't include new equipment, right?
They do. I do have a reserve in there for equipment going up at 5% a year for the first five years. And, uh, yeah, fire engine replacement. Starts out at 70,000 in year one and goes up 5% a year.
This one's at 16 years now, which we were told was the end of effective life.
No, but not germane to the presentation.
Okay, moving on to the final one, maybe three pages down, you'll see a highlight at the top. This option is maintaining the current operational model. There is some, once again, there's some dollar figures out there. We don't know the status, budgetary, so we can't speak on this, you know, pros or cons. Only, only you guys can, but it was presented as an option. Current operating model.
So, what I tried to end up doing there is augmenting maybe a little bit less, I think, on the balance on the reserve firefighters. So, you've got a chief, a couple of captains, an assistant chief and duty officers that are allowed to work from home. And so, that helps keep the cost down. Now, I know it's difficult to get captains and that may be the next level below the captain. And that's, that's the drawback of this particular plan. Again, with a, this was a much smaller tax increase here. Again, to just buy a little, buy a little bit of breathing room. Not saying that this is a great long-term model, but we're able to generate possibly a little bit of surplus for a while until we can kind of maybe come to something else.
And that's, that's appropriate because, speaking for the previous fire board, that's why they did the current model that is in place now, is to buy the time as a temporary setup. And you just spoke it clearly that you could potentially continue this until you're, you do whatever you're going to do if you make it both operationally and budgetary reasons. Because I know you had to borrow some funds, so.
And if you can find the payback.
Now, you used $170 per year for single-family residents?
170.
What is that? What's the number? What's the cost for?
The cost on that last one is the current budget, basically.
Well, from 100 to 170, but it's not...
Approximately 550 is what they deal with. And it goes up from there every year, yeah.
Yeah, his last model, till the year one operating at 633,000. At the six-year mark, we're at 769,000.
There is, there is one last point on this. He's put in the 2.61 increase. Now, there may be an issue as the attorney thinks that this is the last year that we get that CPI. So, if that's the case, then these numbers are going to get blown out of water. But once again, don't shoot it down. It's an option. It's something that we have. With that said, that's the end of my presentation and I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
I'll open it for questions. Anything like clarification on?
No. You've been there at the end of the session. I want to thank you guys, though. That was excellent. Good presentation and excellent work, John.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Cheryl, questions?
I think I've got my clarifications. Now, it's just time to sit down with a magnifying glass and the numbers.
You guys got a lot of homework.
Bill and I were sharing a magnifying glass.
I would just ask that the board really sit down and think about what they can negotiate with the county and not just take what they deal. And take into consideration the political realities that we're dealing with, with the present Board of Supervisors, that may or may not be too conducive to whatever Cayucus would like to have.
John, that was the purpose of today's meeting, is to get this information into the board's hands so that we can digest it and go through it, see what we've got. At least now we've got a better starting point than what we had before with little bits of information here and there and everywhere. We have combined now everything into one.
And that is, to resonate on that, that's exactly what David Church of Lasco had to say. Regardless, if you go down the path of dissolution or dissolution with CSA 10, there's always negotiations through the process. So, it's important that you get your ducks in a row prior to going down that path if you choose to do that.
Can I ask a question about one of the options? Option three, does that repeal our special tax?
No, it doesn't, unfortunately.
So, even if we dissolve, we still have to pay the special tax?
Yes, we do. And we are, yes, we'll always have that. We, there's like three different towns, if you will, in the county that pays a special fire tax. We are the highest. And if the county chose to raise or to create a special fire tax with the whole county, it would take time for them to build up to what we're currently paying of $105 or something like that. That's why negotiation is a perfect tool to use towards the possibility of paramedics for a community, major community.
Or even negotiation of the tax because they could say, I'm just going to throw out a number. Everybody pays, everybody in the unincorporated areas is going to pay a $200 price per single-family residence for the property tax.
We're already paying 100.
We're already paying 100, but they could say, that doesn't make any difference. It's $200 on top of your 100. So, Cayucus would still end up having the highest fire tax in the county unless you could negotiate.
Or we could negotiate something.
Could I ask a question when you say that, though? I thought that I heard that there has to be a vote before taxes.
There does, there does.
So, we couldn't negotiate that. It would have to, the voters would have to say what?
We would negotiate that going in.
A $200, a $200 increase?
No.
That's what I'm saying. He said if everybody in the county then gets $200.
No, this is, this is just a hypothetical. If the county decided to create a special fire tax for the other areas, they may start at 10 bucks, 20 bucks, who knows? But we're at 105 and it stays there because the community voted for it.
Okay.
That doesn't go away. Now, if there is a way of negotiating that, that would be awesome, but I highly doubt it. And I would press the questions for paramedics for a community. That's just a personal opinion, but...
Okay, this time we'll open it up for public comment.
Public comment.
I was going to say I'd like to open it up for public comment. I know several people like to contribute. Carrie?
I'm Carrie Friend. On January 6th of this year, I wrote the Board of Directors a letter accusing you of some Brownout violations. Specifically, one of them was Section 549, 57.5, that deals with distributing paperwork. And once again, you guys are in violation of not distributing paperwork at the beginning of the meeting. I told you about this once already and I think it's unacceptable that once again, you're not distributing papers. The rest of us can't see what you're talking about. And I will be following up with another, your incorrect letter because you're once in violation again and I've already made you aware of this particular code.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
I just, I'm Mark DeCorti, Brakers Drive, that, living here for over 50 years and watching how things happen, and you mentioned political, politics play a big part. And the county took care of our pier. And the county took care of our best building. And the county has been taking care of the pool. And the county has been taking care of our beach accesses. I, I can't really say that I trust the county. No matter what you negotiate, they can change it down the road. Is it a 100% guarantee? Down the road, it's going to be this way? And I can say already, it isn't. There's no free lunch. And it's interesting that this building is the property of the people of this community, the district. To turn that over, that money is going towards, so it's a little hidden cost that's not being stated. If you're turning over something that's worth over a million dollars, I don't know if you'd give away your house. And so, I'm just very concerned of the outcome, one way or another. I, I hope you really, really think, because I think I know what's best for me. And so, I think we need some type of good service in our current district, however it goes.
I'd like to not put your mind at ease, but one part of that, as far as the building goes itself, Supervisor Gibson made it perfectly clear to me that no matter what happens with this, the community decides what happens with it. But he referred to be a fire station. I'm just passing off the information, you know.
But he's one of five. He's one of five. Just because he says it doesn't mean it's true.
Right.
That's what, but you're saying he assured you. That's an empty assurance because there's four other people.
I just don't mind with what he told me.
Right, and I'm responding to that because I don't believe that.
Can you get this picture?
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I have, I just have an emotional statement from Wolf first thing, Lauren Magali, 13th Street. First thing, I would just really like to see this building and stay here. I have a really hard time with giving up the building. I feel like it's an asset to our community. And if there's a way we can, if we have to just, if you guys really feel like the safety of our community is better with CalFire, then I believe you. If you really think that, that everybody's safety is there. But don't let it be about the assets. Keep the assets here. My emotional, I was, I've been a volunteer with the fire department for seven years now, seven or eight years now. There was a call I went on and it was, it's ironically the day after the tax didn't pass. And a person was in respiratory arrest. And we were there several minutes before the ambulance got there, giving her rescue breath and oxygen. And CalFire never showed up. They were on their way to Cal Valley on a fire. And I love CalFire, don't get me wrong. I am not saying anything bad about CalFire. They provided us a great service here. I've, when working for other departments, I've worked with CalFire on assignments. I love them. But I'm just saying for our community, having Cayucus Fire here, knowing that we were there, even if it was two or three minutes, it was several minutes before the ambulance got there, that person is alive and walking around, breathing, talking. And I just want to know how much is a life worth? I mean, if, I know, it's, again, CalFire couldn't help that. They got called out to a call. But it's, you can't help that she went into respiratory arrest that day either. Just how much is that life worth is what I want you guys to think about, too.
Right, we are. And that's one of the reasons why, and I hope I speak for the whole board, whatever model is selected for the department, it is staffing an engine in this building 24/7 so that we don't have that issue, that problem. Now, no fire department in the world can prepare for the fourth call erupt. Otherwise, we'd have to have a fire truck parked in everybody's driveway. So, we understand that. The other thing, and again, I'm presuming just by speaking for the board, is that one, to me, one of the attractions of the county is the ability to have a volunteer force in conjunction with your station. So, the model really isn't changing that much. There still is the opportunity for those who can and desire to be involved in the community and to be part of the department, such as yourself and the other volunteers we have. We would be remiss by saying, thank you very much, now get out. That's ridiculous. You've got time and effort in training, at equipping people who have the desire to support the community. So, at least for me, that's what I'm looking at, is the best of all possible worlds. A career-staffed engine for immediate response, that the people get to work in the community, know the community and start to belong to the community, as well as having the volunteers to augment those services. We've got three sets of wheels out here. All of them roll out of the barn, yahoo. That's what's supposed to happen.
That would satisfy her concerns and yours as well. But the key to the success of that is to ensure that if it was given to the county, that they'd provide that reserve program here. Because the reserve program keeps the department, the station, it keeps the people active here. Anybody can volunteer and you get that immediate response, more than you do now. So, the key to that is the reserve program.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. Before you dash out real quick, I would like to have a motion to accept the Citizens Advisory Committee report.
Make that motion.
I second it.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to accept the Cayucus Citizen, Cayucus Fire Department Citizen Advisory Committee's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item we need to do is dismiss the committee with, obviously, the gratitude of the board. Very much. I will accept the motion.
So would.
Bill seconds it?
Yes. What?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to dismiss the committee as we accepted their report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, our regular board meeting is June... Okay, our regular board meeting is June 1st, in this building at 3:30. We are adjourned.